Hello, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, at the Carver Police Station. This meeting will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. If we could please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We are here tonight to continue our discussions on the MBTA 3A zoning matter. We have several properties that we're going to look at. We also have Judy Barrett here to help us as well go through those properties and see if anything will work in her eyes. I think we're going to try to aim at three particular locations, according to Mr. Bott, who unfortunately cannot make it here right now. So we have properties we cannot show you, but we do have a list of them. If we want to go through them, or if anyone would like to come up initially and make any comments or suggestions, we're open to that as well. All right, hearing none, so then we will go through our list.
I did learn that the state does not have the authority to appoint a special master.
Oh.
So it is not currently part of it. The state can only use financial and legal pressure to sort, do this mess they made.
Well, that's good to know.
And the financial pressure is obviously the grants and taking it back from that. And now they can take us to court and force the town to comply.
Well, I think we've made it very clear that most of us are not, if not all, in favor of this, but we're trying to set forth these locations because we don't want the state to come in and mandate the areas within the town and force us to do something. But what Mr. Shea is saying right now is very helpful to know. And just because we may come up with a few locations that may fit or not fit in this case, I think that's really the preference here, is to make it most difficult for someone to come in, a developer, and to propose something on these locations. It's still going ahead to be for the residents to vote on at the special town meeting. So what we are discussing here tonight is coming up with three locations to have the Barrett Engineering Group assist us with seeing if those fit from a zoning perspective. Correct, Judy?
It is. Yeah, we'll explain a little bit about our role and how this works.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
So first of all, we have modeled a few locations that Tom referred to us a few weeks ago, and one of them works fine.
Okay.
We'll get to that. But no matter what location you pick, we have to run it through the state's compliance model, which is a GIS-based slash Excel-based system. Plug those parcels in, and that model's going to take some land out, most likely. So if a site has constraints of some type, wetlands or some other factor, it's going to take some land out. So unfortunately, we can't take a site tonight, divide it by 15, and say, "You're going to be okay." What we can do is try to advise you on things that are likely to get tossed out from the model.
Okay.
So the model's going to help address a couple of things. First, although you are an adjacent small town, and there are things you don't have to do, fortunately, you do have to hit the minimum of 15 units an acre, because that's in the statute. You do have to hit the zoned capacity number, which is 235 units. So when we create a district, and we're working, this, by the way, is my colleague, Lily, who was the genius with the model. When we plug parcels in, we have to be able to show in the end, yes, this site comprised of whatever parcel numbers we fed it can reach 15 units an acre minimum, can generate and support, because it's zoned to support at least 235 units. The site, the area can be whatever size you want, but the density number still applies. So when we've been trying to look at parcels that Tom referred to us, we were trying to stick as closely as we could with as many parameters here of your existing zoning as we could. So we figured things like a minimum plot of 60,000 square feet. I think the height metric we were considering was three stories. If you go lower than that, it's not going to fly with the state, so I'm just being honest with you.
You realize we have volunteered by?
I'm just telling you what the requirements are. I'm not passing judgment on it. You have to, some land will come out because we have to make parking assumptions. So we assumed the state standard of 1.5 parking spaces per unit, and that land all comes out before you get to the 15 units an acre. So that's why it's important for us to get direction from the board, so we can go back to our office, model these, and be able to get right back to you, because meanwhile, we've been told our deadline to get content back to you, which is a proposed zoning map amendment and zoning, is in a couple of weeks, which is really kind of unheard of. So we're doing our best, but I just want to, you know, if you already want to talk about places that were referred to us, we can give you a sense of what worked and what didn't work. If you have other areas you prefer to refer to us, that's fine, but just know we're not going to be able to tell you tonight whether they work.
Do you have the list from Mr. Bott?
Is this the list that begins with 1 through Meadowbrook?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If I might ask, where are we on the acreage, the necessary acreage?
So as an adjacent small town, you are not subject to the 50 unit, 50 acre, I'm sorry, 50 acre minimum. That's one of the things that doesn't apply here. What does apply is a minimum of 15 units an acre, 235 units of zoned capacity, and am I forgetting?
I believe you still couldn't...
The contiguous area, yeah, the contiguous area. So there's two area standards. One is the total area in the district. The standard is 50 acres, but there's another standard that says, "And no portion of the district can be smaller, contiguous area smaller than five acres." So you don't end up with little pods that are essentially undeveloped. So you are subject to that five acre contiguous in school.
So based on those factors, what kind of acreage are we looking at? I know 15.2 is what we'd be required for the necessary 15 units, but then when we add in, as you said, parking, and I don't know what else is...
So maybe we should just tell them on the modeling that you did what acreage worked, given the parameters that we fed into it, which is to try to comply as much as we could with your existing zoning parameters.
Donna.
Is there, can I get on that GIS?
You would need to know how to use it, so I don't know. I mean, we're not...
Can you tell me who developed that model?
RKG Associates, a firm in Boston.
Arcadia?
RKG Associates was under contract with the Commonwealth to develop this GIS model.
And did you used to work for them?
I did. I worked for them until 2017.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I was a proud member of RKG Associates.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did we have an acreage number, a rough acreage number?
I was trying to get that to finish.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Sure. So Tom had originally given us four areas, which was a planning board suggested area, town center, and then the V and VB zoning in North Carter. Those were his designations. And most of the districts definitely hit the zone capacity, but they were typically too big to reach the density requirement. So the original planning board area, which is mostly some parcels on North Main Street, that was 23 acres in the modeling, and the density using existing zoning was just under 15 at 14.7 units an acre.
Just under 15?
Units an acre, so it would not hit the density requirement.
Right, right, right. Well, again, we were, I was looking for a comprehensive number, like it's going to be, we got it zoned for 20 acres or...
It's sort of hard to know. It kind of depends on the existing zoning and what works out in the model, what parcels are considered not developable.
Right, because it's going to deduct some land, and it's going to be different based on the characteristics of each parcel. That's why we can't just...
Right, but if we were just talking purely upland experience, we have 100 acres of upland, how much of that, just straight up, are we looking to zone in?
Well, let me put it this way. If you were at an adjacent community, you would be subject to the 50 acres. And the 50 acres was arrived at by putting a pin on the mountain, saying, "Here's a train station. What's a half-mile walk to a train station?" Draw radius. That's how they got to 50 acres. So 50 acres works, and maybe that's a helpful view, but we have done smaller ones, we've done larger ones. And the reason, the way we've been able to deal with larger sites was to increase the open space ratio. We know of one community that created a 3A district where it was a pretty large site. They only wanted development in one small part of it, so they created a sub-district called that open space. That was actually not developable, but it's in the district, and the density, therefore, was calculated based on that smaller sub-district. You could do things like that.
Okay.
So I think the most important thing is for you to decide locations that you can support, and then let us do the math. I hate to...
So what exactly do you mean by support? Because we are limited by the three stories, based on our available equipment, so...
I think we assume three stories.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
All right.
So should we...
Mr. Maynard had a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
Before we get too far out of the road, just regarding the fact that we mentioned locations and lots of parcels in specific areas and so forth, I've been out of town for the last two weeks, and I've gotten several questions from people, and I'm only the associate, regarding my property beyond the list. I think we should make it clear, just so there's no misunderstanding. We can't take land, we can't do anything, we can't mandate building. We're only suggesting for the town to vote on zoning. It's not material and relevant to anything we're deciding as to which piece of property, just the fact that what we are doing here, you know, we're televised, we're the public. I think we should be, make sure people are aware of that, because apparently a lot of people aren't, they see lists of properties that someone is sharing with them, and they say, "What's going on here? My property going to be taken or something?" There's no, there's no eminent domain involved here, there's no taking, there's no nothing. This is simply property that can be zoned, the same way zoning can be changed from residential to residential commercial to residential agricultural, for good reason. And that's what we're looking at right now, just basically to meet the state's requirements, which do not exist as requirements for us, other than as far as the state has mandated. They just exist now, and they didn't exist before, so we have to, we have to do these things, so I want to kind of get a record of whether, I guess I just said, but I was going to say, someone should say that to make sure that the...
Thank you, Mr. Maynard.
Yeah, it is important.
It will be an overlay district, so much like if the town was to increase the town center, it can increase the radius of the town center, but there's no onus on the owners of the land in regards to that.
Correct, yeah. I mean, just because we create or suggest an area does not mean that somebody can go in and build there. You know, it does not mean that they have to forfeit their land, or, as Mr. Maynard said as well, eminent domain. It just means we're kind of checking that box, and I think I've made it quite clear at every meeting that I oppose this, and the only reason why we even entertain this, for the most part, is just so that we're in compliance with the state. I don't think that the state has any idea, you know, what our community is, what we're faced with. We're an agricultural community with limited services, and although great services, it's limited, and we would, it'd be tremendous strain on us. So in my eyes, I would like to create the most difficult location for a developer to come in and do something like this, and offer someone money for their land to propose these apartment-style buildings that they would likely be.
How about Miles Standis, they call him?
That's not acceptable to the state.
I think that's open space.
It's not acceptable to the state.
It won't allow us, that will not model up.
Right, right.
I don't understand, you're basically more clever than that.
Well, I'm just saying, they're coming to our town, telling us what to do, and by time we put our foot down and tell these people what we want.
He's wise as serpents and gentle as doves.
Ms. Barrett, if I may ask a question. So you have 1 through 4 Meadowbrook on your list, and how much of that is qualifying acreage?
So 42% of that parcel is excluded in the modeling.
So roughly around eight or nine acres?
Yes.
Okay.
Potential district comprised of that one parcel?
No, that was in a larger district that Tom had suggested we...
It wasn't specific to that particular address.
That parcel is within like a larger district, so...
Tom gave us lists of parcels that together would create an acre, an area, I think. So we have modeled them as potential areas, but usually, I think in our experience, just about every community we've worked with, the area is usually comprised of only one parcel.
Okay, so that parcel would have been, that you looked at probably would have included the police station and the library, or the town hall, or...
We have parcel numbers.
Okay.
This area is the town center area that Tom directed us towards, so it includes a large number of...
I think we're all agreeing.
Baseball field, it wasn't over there, was it?
We were kind, excuse me, that we were kind of specific to that particular property because of its current usage, and that it's not out here in the center of the town, because, you know, we're one of the rural communities, one of the last small agricultural communities in town, and we didn't, we didn't want to make this like a four-piece in the town, like in that, in that particular sense. So I think part of what we were thinking was three small, maybe eight-acre properties, or whatever the equivalent would be to, to make up the entirety of what we were looking at.
You could have a small parcel, but you're going to have more density.
Yes, yes.
Okay, because you still have to reach that 235 unit zoned capacity number. So when you go with more density, you're probably talking about more height, because somehow you have to fit those units on that smaller parcel.
Okay, all right. And based on a three-story, what are we looking at for density per acre? I know we have to zone for 15, but I mean, if we're only going to do three-story high units...
We have to model, it's not something we're going to be able to just plug in and answer tonight. I mean, we certainly can get back to you.
So one of the properties that you looked at, you said, was not intriguing, but would meet the necessary requirements?
Yes, so it was the, some of the parcels are also highlighted in the board listing list that Tom had included, that I believe you were speaking of. So it is a number of parcels along North Main Street, and then also some parcels along High Street. So it is 11 parcels altogether with an acreage of 36.
So I will tell you that although you got this from Mr. Bott, I don't think that the board is in line with, this town is very small, and we have a very, very limited commercial acreage, and we don't want to sacrifice that with the only grocery store around for 10 miles, and our only pharmacy around for roughly the same distance. Those, I think, are off the table for me. I'm not willing to sacrifice commercial...
You're not the only town we heard this from.
Yeah, so...
I'm just working, I just don't want to give up at the worst of aspects.
So modeling that off of the North Carver District area where they're, it's all commercial properties, and they're all necessary to the township. I don't think that, I'm willing to put that on the table whatsoever in regards to... I will tell you that the Spring Street Extension area, right next to the highway...
Yeah.
That was high on my list, and what type of area we would need to include in that for development, because it's right next to the highway, it doesn't really affect the rural characteristics of the town. I know 30 to 32 West Street, although it contains far more acreage than I think we would be required to do. I think that there are some benefits in the long run to the town, despite the fact that it's going to create a lot of congestion issues in the area. But those were the two, the two biggest. And then, of course, we got the Carver Housing Authority, which was, it's listed at 16 acres, but I estimated that only about six or seven acres of that is, is developable under our conditions. And of course, we have a couple of properties on Tremont Street, but did you have any recommendations, like looking around?
We were not really tasked with...
That's okay, that's okay. No, I thought I'd ask.
No, it's fine. I understand. And I apologize, but...
Don't, there's no need to apologize. You're, this is our first meeting, and I, see, I think we're all feeling under the gun for this, and...
So are we.
Yes, and, and that so much of this town has been developed, and then we're limited on, you know, our village districts are pretty much the same as our commercial districts, and, you know, you come to the center of town here, you get the police, the fire, the library, and the EMS, and the ball fields, and the school buildings, and nobody wants to put those on the chopping block. I mean, even though it's unlikely the town would ever sell any of those properties, on the one hand, on the other hand, who knows?
So we do have to be a little bit careful with public property, because there's, I'm not recalling how the model actually treats public parcels, but there is an issue as to whether or not they're actually available for development. So in one community we worked in, they wanted to include a public parcel or two, but because they had a current housing production plan, and that property was identified for potential development, future development, they were approved to include it. But you need to be careful. I would not put all your eggs in a bag.
I wouldn't either.
Yeah, I would definitely not do that.
I do know that, according to what I read anyways, that because Meadowbrook is already a housing, is already set up as housing, and it's a fairly high-density one, that that would be acceptable also.
Will we ask to model that site?
That site, yes.
How did it look?
So the capacity in the model, the initial modeling was 285 units, and the, so that would create like 15.02 units per acre, so...
Okay, I will tell you that almost certainly all of that property is, is not available for development. There's, there are wetlands in the far, far rear of it, and I believe there is a public well with a zone around it that would preclude development on that particular property. So maybe six acres of it is, or seven acres is developable.
And this is an example of what the model can not pick up, is the overlay districts, we actually have to look at those, because it might, yeah, it's not going to tell you. We ran into this in another town where they thought that they were probably going to be able to get away with doing a compliant district, because, gosh, golly gee, there's a groundwater protection district that's going to require a special apartment anyway, and town council and I went, "Ooh!"
Right. You can't require a special apartment. So I don't want to back you into the corner either. I want, I want to be completely upfront with you.
Sure. I think the best you can do is, if you can tell us a few areas that, you know, you think would be okay to propose, we'll model them, we'll get back to you in a couple of days. I don't know when you're meeting again, but some of these...
Next week, so we're going to be meeting probably, just like last month, almost every week.
Because we need ultimately, we need direction to create a map amendment. So I think you should just brainstorm, what are you going to, what can the board get up and plausibly recommend to town be, and then let us figure out the modeling, and we will get back to you with a short report. We'll show you the areas we mapped, we'll say, here's a summary table that tells you how you get to, you decide, and then if you meet again today, next week, then you'll have all that information, and you can give us direction.
Excellent.
I think that's probably the best thing to do.
I can give you my recommendations right now.
So you're going to...
Not North Carver. Not North Carver.
Well, the Spring Street Extension is right off the highway, and it's not, it's not going to affect the traffic in North Carver, and that, that would be my, my first pick. And then, of course, 30, 32 West Street, and then that's, that's really my two primary. But then, again, I would prefer to see it broken up into three smaller places, which is why I ask about Meadowbrook back here, and...
You can do two sub-districts. Several of our other towns did two sub-districts, which together met the 50 acres, which I realize you're not subject to, but as long as you've got a district that's, that nothing is smaller than five acres, and you meet all the other targets that you're subject to, you can have an overlay district that's comprised of two separate locations. We've done that.
So they don't need three, seven, three individual ones? It can be two?
It would be one district with two sub-districts. That's actually been a very common approach.
Because looking for large areas in town with this much wetlands, and it can be problematic.
Is the Spring Street Extension one parcel, five parcels? See, part of the problem is we need parcel numbers.
Oh, well, I think we listed two parcel numbers.
Something else would need to be added.
But it was discussed as a larger area, so I think there's about maybe 15, 12 parcels in the area, and four or five of them are currently owned by the state.
So if it's state land, it's going to have to come out.
Okay, because it's not, it's not open space or anything, it's just...
It's, right.
Okay.
State land comes out, but if there's other parcels there, we can certainly do those.
I would just look at that, that whole Spring Street Extension.
Okay, so we can look at it, and we can take out whatever is publicly owned and see what we've got to work with.
Right, right.
Does that work?
Yes, please. Now, West Street is a big property. It's 48 acres, and if we were to zone it, we would want to kind of not zone the entirety of the 48 acres, just what we would necessarily be required to.
So let me give you some advice.
Yeah.
Do not, do not create a parcel that's split by zoning district boundary.
Okay.
Put the parcel in, and then create a sub-district that's all open space.
Okay.
So that you, you isolate in one area where the housing can go.
Because there's considerable wetlands, too. There's considerable wetlands in the back.
Right, so if we could have them look at that property...
Exactly, as a whole.
As a whole.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Grand Mall, 38 Meadow Street. Mr. Shea, I'm asking why you would go West Street? Why that particular parcel?
Well, mostly because it's been fairly, it needs a lot of cleanup that the town is not going to do, and in the long run, it's, plain and simple, it's very cont... not going to do and in the long run, it, it's, plain and simple, it's very contaminated. So as, as the benefits to the town of having that contamination removed would be exceptionally beneficial because the town will never have the money to do it. But.
Thank you.
I look at it from a different standpoint. I look at it as no developer's going to want to go in there and deal with that.
Wow.
That's how I look, yes. He's just being a little bit nicer about it, but I'm just being very honest.
Yeah, because that just seems very random, you know, West Street. I'm not ad for know you with that area.
Well, it's, it's a sizable property and it's, and it's just, the wetlands have been overrun, the contamination issues are there, it's right, it's near the center of the town and there's a lot of public wells in the area. Plus, all the people, of course, 90-plus percent of the town of Carver depends on their wells for, for clean water, which we have to take into consideration.
How about by the airport, that one?
That was discussed briefly at the last meeting, Donna, but none of that came onto this list. I don't know.
It was discussed, yes.
Yeah, but it didn't make it to the list. I don't know who owns the particular parcel that Sarah had mentioned. What's that?
The airport owns it.
If you're going to have a problem with that.
Yep, so that's a problem, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does anyone know what any other town around this is planning to do with their zoning? Or is it kind of everyone keeping themselves?
They've been fighting.
I don't know.
I know Plumpton's going to start a project up by the Extension Street. I think that's where they put all their zoning.
No, I'm not so sure about that.
They put it right on 58.
Yeah.
Did they?
Yeah. I think that project is a 40B project that you're thinking of, yeah.
They're certainly packing them in at intersection of 58 and 106 by the.
Oh, really?
Oh, it's all developed, the whole Peach Farm.
Wow.
Is gone.
But I think what he's referring to is the 40B.
It can, 40B can be inclusive in it because it's already out.
No, but I think that, that's Mr. Opochinsky's plan to put that 40B project in because he wasn't happy with results perhaps in Plimpton, to put something in. So I think that that's separate and distinct, whether or not they factored that into their zoning, I'm not sure.
All right.
Yeah.
My big concern would be where is the other town putting this and where are we going to put it? Are they going to puck everything in right beside Carver and then we have to deal with the traffic and everything and get no benefits from it? Or Plumpton zoning it right by us? Same with maybe Wareham? That's one of the considerations I would like to know. Name's Kyle, new to town, by the way, moved in last year.
You're welcome.
I came from Hembrook.
Yeah, that's a great question.
That Marshfield.
I will say that Middleborough has to put it within a radius of their T station as does Kingston, right? That's the Kingston station. It's, and most of the other towns are, are, have fought it, but they're in the same predicament we are. I'm not entirely certain where they.
We want to stay close because we can't leave our areas of, we can put across 44, plus 50, 495, I mean, it's not just good for us, it's good for anybody who's going to actually be living there, you know, we presume that they're going to communicate, I mean, communities in Santa Barbara, they're going to be going off someplace else like most of us do.
Have a pop here though and do they got this appointment and all that?
Not all at the same time on Monday morning.
We were discussing.
Have any of the houses near 495?
Yes, we were.
I think that would be really important for them to have that.
Oh, yes. I don't know why it's broken out.
Well, we can use the larger or we can use, if you had used the smaller one in conjunction with Meadowbrook and then, and then make a third smaller district, maybe the Spring Street Extension, then we could do three subdivision inside the total.
Three sub-districts.
Sub-districts inside the total overlay.
I'm going to look at that because.
312, 314, Tremont Street.
I'm not sure where they lie, you know, for access, so is one thrown in there just as an extra or is that an option?
Right, I don't know. I know one room's 55 acres and one's 10 acres.
10, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have to put that together, right, for that?
Oh, I think, no, that would be.
Oh, you don't have to put them together, but.
Yeah.
That would be too extensive.
Yeah. I was, I still think one of the least problematic areas is the, the will-be properties. They're right next to 44. They're not, they're not going to lose anything that the town, people of town require on a daily basis. I don't deprecate the need for them to have their business and certainly, again, this wouldn't be pushing them out, this would actually be giving the owners the property or alternatives if they wanted to sell it or develop it, but that's the kind of property I think we're looking at.
Are they in operation at the?
Okay. Some drug dealing law, there's traffic going out there anyway.
My, my only issue with that is that it's hard enough dealing with that intersection, getting off of 44, getting on 44. It's also.
True.
You do have the lights there, there's already.
It's also the most dangerous, currently the most dangerous intersection is getting off of 44, all the way to Plimpton and Street crossovers.
I will add in though that MTA zoning law allows us to be proactive with zoning. So if you zone, it allows us to be proactive with zoning, meaning that if we choose to develop a location that is kind of, you know, a developer's going to like it, you can work with them to say, hey, we don't like that light, by the way, we need a light on the other end of 44, you have to do these traffic developments, where they might cite that property anyways, like it and go, oh, we're going to go 40B. And then they're just going to throw a middle finger to the town and say, you know what? We don't have to do these traffic improvements because you have no leverage and see you.
I don't think we can request improvements or require improvements.
There's no minimum per bedroom either on each apartment.
So you can't request improvements through the MTA zoning, like if we rezoned?
Can't, you can't require. When you get right up and set there, you, as you want, but you can't condition the approval on off-site improvements.
And if I could just add one thing, the education that I've gotten on all of this, in five years, they reevaluate this and as our population grows because of this, we've got to add more zoning in five years.
I, I will agree with you, not only that, but the governor's looking to overturn the apartment, the laws that restrict apartments, apartment buildings. The governor is looking to change, currently roughly 5% of the cities and towns are zoned for apartment buildings and the state is looking to change that, to increase that number. So if one way or the other, it's, it's coming at us.
This is the other one in here?
I don't think so.
We don't even have water, we don't have stuff, we don't have transportation, I don't know.
That's the lot for the 312.
But those are all factors.
314.
That mitigating against development.
That's the 10 acres.
Honestly, I think that's probably our best, but it handles every aspect.
Right.
Can I ask something?
Yes, certainly.
We're late to the meeting because we just saw the post, please. You do know there's a for sale sign on that property now?
Could, I'm sorry.
There's a for.
No, no, you have to start with your name.
Okay, Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin, thank you very much. Please go ahead.
There is a for, so yesterday, there's a for sale sign on the empty house, the three house lot that Rob is on, there's a big for sale sign.
Okay, yeah, so that's, that's up for, yes.
And I looked up his realtor sign and it's saying, what was it, 20 something acres for sale. Is that going to affect it at all? Is he going to try to sell the land first?
It, uh.
This is just, it's zoning, it doesn't.
Right. I mean, he'll, if, if it does get zoned there, he can probably get a better price for it.
Okay.
But I believe he retired or went out of business roughly, uh, end of last year.
Sold the business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was sold to a Canadian company.
It was sold, yeah.
It's 15.74 acres development site.
And again, that's.
Does it say the address?
His address, the sign is local realty, Greg Donahue.
No, I mean the, the actual address for the property, that 15 acres.
It shows an overview of the whole, the whole area from 44 all the way to High Street, all the way up. It says one residential property.
I think this is going to be separate and distinct and, again, this would be falling in line with, I think, West Street, something like that.
Right, because again, I hate to lose the potential for commercial development in that area, which is less traffic, it's right near the highway and it'll only run Monday through Friday generally.
Right. No, I agree with you on that. I think, in my mind, I'm thinking that particular lot has definitely had, probably has some issues because of how the business was conducted previously, so I don't think that that's a slam dunk for a developer to come in and say, hey, I'm going to build there. There's going to be some tremendous environmental issues.
The biggest concerns in that property are the, the diesel tanks that are buried. Other than that, it's all pretty much surface. It's, you know, where the cars were parked and it's pulling those tanks out and they'll, they'll, they'll use that as an excuse to put in the basement apartments.
Right, true, yeah.
It's hard to hear you guys.
I apologize, we don't have.
We don't, we don't have anything tonight. Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
So do we, do we have like a third area we can?
Were you going to look at the 312-314 Tremont Street?
Because it isn't, I need to see on your, like, absolutely.
Okay.
We'd want a trifecta with that, that, we'd want a third property to fit in there, roughly 10 acres too.
I don't know, I think we should add something on to the Spring Street Extension to make that.
Do they still have a lot of room over there?
What's that?
Do they send, though, they were developing it, the whole big, the commercial area, but there's, there's still a big open area or?
Well, it's, this would fall in the residential.
It would be part of the residential.
So that, that is an area we have not modeled yet.
Okay.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
So that one, the West Street, and then my recommendation would be the three, the three properties, something like Meadowbrook, 312, 314, Tremont Street, and then we'd need another one that's at least probably 10 or 12 acres to add in there.
What's the Tremont Street area? Is that down?
Redymix.
What?
Uh, the concrete plant.
So 32 West Street, 312, 314 Tremont, and what else would you say?
Do we want to go with Spring Street also?
The Spring Street Extension area.
Oh, the Spring Street Extension?
Yeah, and determining.
Just look at it on this, how's your thing?
You'd have to, of course, remove whatever the state-owned property is and just seeing if there's enough area.
Exactly.
And then there's, you know, we might just throw in, well, because we're on the Meadowbrook and the Tremont is, is like two out of the three possibilities, we would want to find another 10, 12 acre, 12, probably 12 acre property to throw in there.
Right.
So lacking that off the top of my head, I would consider 334 Tremont Street and taking a look at that one.
Then you'd be doing two sites on Tremont Street, right?
Well.
They're contiguous.
It's going to be one or the other, either three smaller sites or the one largest site and then if we, and that way we have four sites, four proposals to look at.
Right.
Because I can't off the top of my head come up with a, a 12 acre site to add on to the Meadowbrook and 310, 12 Tremont Street that could, would meet the requirements for, to bring us up to that 200 and some odd houses.
35.
Would that be, is there any concrete out of it? That, that would put them out of business, sorry. Or whoever, you just on their property.
No, it would put them out of business, absolutely.
Business, you know.
Well, that's the other concern is that I looked at the taxes that that company pays and you'd be surprised how much revenue we make from them.
No, I would, I would not want to put them on the list.
Right.
Personally, that, I think they have the Capeway racetrack back there, which is a big draw too.
They do?
I think they have a racetrack out in the very, very back.
They do, no, because I bought that property.
Oh, okay. It's listed on the map, so.
Oh, that's good to know, yeah. I can, I can hear them out there, but they don't have an actual track.
I wouldn't want to list the concrete, but on the other hand, where are you going to get a permit?
Right. I think Mr. Bott had mentioned, yes, that would be one heck of a site to try to go in and develop, in addition to the fact that I added to it, I don't think that.
But I will go back to, I don't want to lose commercial property.
Right.
We can't, this town cannot afford to lose commercial property.
If we lose that one, we'd be in big trouble because I was shocked to see how much they pay in taxes. It's crazy.
So the Spring Street Extension area is not commercially zoned? There's no commercial zoning in that?
There's no commerci, it's, it's all residential.
Okay. And then, just because we're having a little.
Yeah.
Is 32 West Street still on the table or?
Yes, please.
Okay. And that is zoned, that's in a residential?
That's a residential zone too.
And then 312 to 314 Tremont, here is that off the list?
No, we weren't that one.
I heard you saying that and I just wasn't sure, are we on that or not?
We wanted you to look at it, but it is a commercial property.
But we'd want you to look at it in conjunction with the Meadowbrook property here to see if that together, as two separate districts under the overlay district, they would meet.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
Meadowbrook is, is what, is it just called Meadowbrook? What is it?
Uh, 1 through 4 Meadowbrook Way here, it's, it's housing currently.
Okay, sorry.
It's right behind the library, so when you pull up your map, you'll see it's about 16 acres, but I think only about half of that is usable.
Okay.
And maybe if you put those two together.
Yeah.
And then you can, you might say, listen, you have to add a few more acres in here or we have to throw in another site to meet our requirements on that.
Yeah, I mean, the juggling this, with this is going to be, if you're trying to keep the density at as close to 15 as possible, then we need as much land as we can to stay within as many of your zoning plans.
Yes, yes.
If you're trying to limit the amount of land you're putting in the district, then we're going to have to go against your existing zoning plan or it's for density and height. I mean, that's just.
Yes.
That's the Tremont.
I certainly see that.
Yeah, okay.
And we didn't want to look at the Wenham Road, no?
Well, that was the two, it was that one and what do we have? And right next to it, they just put in, they built, they're thinking of building a subdivision.
Ohana Way, yeah.
Yeah, is it, is it Ohana Way?
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, we can add those, those two in too and they can, they can maybe make the trifecta out of that or, I don't remember the number of it though. It might be 89 Wenham Road.
It's right here on the list, the 89-A.
Well, that's one, but I think it connects to 87.
See, it doesn't, there's multiple.
Yeah, what's the big, oh. And I apologize to people.
Do you think at your next meeting you could hand out some information to the public so we can know what's going on?
We would be happy to, Donna. This is a little bit of a surprise for us this evening.
I'm not sure. So I, I'd take a picture with my camera.
Before your next meeting, we can give you what we've mapped and we can give you summary tables for how they, how they look in the model.
And that's the one over there.
It gives you the, 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 the ability to what Ross, you asked for. Would it make more sense for us to give, to include more, more parcels and more properties?
So we can, we can model three, we can model three areas.
Okay.
So, all right, so.
We have something else. On the list, you see 89-A Wenham Road.
89 what?
89-A Wenham Road.
Is that on here? Okay, I guess we have that.
And then you would have to add to that probably 85.
89, 85, what?
Yes.
Maybe not that 85 in there now. That's not on. Okay.
They're connected properties.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so where does that leave us?
We're gonna try to stay as close as we can to the zoning parameters you have in these districts, separate from the issue of density, which I think you all understand, we didn't write the law, so we had a model at the 15 acres an acre, but we're gonna try to stay with what you have in your subject, as much as possible, the height, the minimum lot area, things like that. If it's a big site and we need to get the density up, we'll create a larger open space sub-district or something like that.
Well, our minimum lot size is 60,000 square feet, but I mean, that totally defeats what the state is trying to do.
Well, yeah, that would just say you have to have at least 60,000 square feet and, you know, you can do 15 acres an acre, so someone's gonna end up with more than 60,000 square feet to get there, but I'm just saying, we can do that.
So for each unit, what you're saying is for each unit, the property has to have 60,000 square feet and the rest can be transferred to open space?
And most certainly can. There's another community that has created a 3A district where they really only wanted the housing in one part of the site, but to avoid a split parcel situation with the zoning plotline, they simply put multiple in an open space sub-district and said, here's where the housing's coming from.
And that's probably what we're looking at for both West Street and Spring Street, Spring Street extension.
An open space sub-district.
If the room is there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, sometimes it's just a question of having a very high open space ratio for the development, but I mean, at some point, it's silly. It's better to just have a sub-district and say, this is gonna be open space. I mean, the other thing we have to sort of juggle is what's plausible zone, you know, so. We'll work on these.
I think in our town, we're kind of gonna have to...
Is RKG involved in any of this? Like when you put your stuff in there, do you go back to that company and consult with them again?
No.
No?
They were hired by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in Atlanta to create this model. And that's what they did. That was their scope. So anything we need to consult with now in the model, we go to BOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, sorry.
Ms. Ren, could I identify yourself anytime you ask a question for our minute taken?
Donna, sorry.
Thank you.
So RKG had a scope that was to create a model that would export from Excel parcels with certain characteristics that would then feed into this Excel model and do this wonderful magic based on whatever parameters we fit in. There was another consultant hired under the same contract to do a model zoning bylaw. And we haven't used it, but there's pieces of it that are pretty good, so we try to sculpt together what we think makes sense. I try, in all the zoning we've written, to stay as close as we can to the structure of what you have. So the zoning looks to the public like, oh yeah, this is our zoning bylaw, so we're not just taking a model off a shelf.
I just have one more question. And I don't know doing that.
Ms. Ren.
She had just raised her hand behind you, Donna. Sorry.
That's okay. I can expect the fully watchers to rule. Why do they have to be three stories tall? There's not anything in this town that's three stories tall.
No, no, that's the maximum, that's the maximum height that they can be, not the minimum height. That's, our bylaws and our fire, equipment and fire department can only handle up to that. So that's the maximum height of a building. They could be one or two stories.
Two would be way better.
Right, but the maximum that they can be, which is allowed by law in this town is...
We're not brain tricked or twisted or handled by, we're just a small town.
I agree with you 100%. Well, they're heights higher, but I can tell you, you have to bear in mind what the use is. The use is multifamily housing. And multifamily housing is not developed for two stories and it's not going to be acceptable to BOHLC. So we're trying to keep this as close as we can to the tenor of your town, given the constraints we're working under.
We don't have three stories.
I'm just saying, we won't be able to do two stories.
I certainly don't speak to the board, I speak to myself. We're trying to make a silverware sound for sound over here. We're trying, we're just gonna take, fill in the metaphor you want. We don't want this, we don't like this. I personally think the American Revolution's walked over less than this. This is an incredible intrusion. It's a centralized, collectivized way of doing things that does not apply to us. You tell us we need to build more housing, great, let us figure out how to do it, but we're not being told that. We were told you have to do these things, so we're trying to find the least offensive way to do it. And it's, it ain't no fun.
Can I ask you folks a question? Because I'm just curious, when was the last time someone did a Chapter 40B development here?
There's been several proposed over the past, I've been here 20 years, so there's probably been five of them proposed, but nobody ever had because there's a lack of public water.
No, I believe we do have, we do have older ones.
So why do you think a 3A district is gonna lead to anything different? Because under 40B, they can get more waivers than they can under 3A.
Right, right.
If it's a 40B, they can request waivers to your local weapons bylaw, your local Board of Health regulations, and your zoning. This is only about zoning. So if people can't make a 40B work here, I'm just suggesting maybe when people put some common sense into this.
I think we also have to plan for possibilities, not probabilities. We don't know who's gonna do this, being rational and say, yeah, I'll overpay for that property. This is my vanity project, I want to do this. We just want to make sure that this is done at least in Jersey's way, if and when it's done.
Sure.
It's like a root canal, too. You gotta have it, you gotta have it some point. My feeling is that if I'm gonna have to have one, I'll wait as long as I can and I'm gonna find the most painless doctor and maybe hope that my problem goes away before that.
I understand completely what I'm saying is that 40B gives them a lot more than this will.
I will say too that if it came down to it, I would favor 40B over the Rule 3 that we're dealing with because all of 40B would be counted towards affordable housing.
If it's rental.
Yes, and, well, it's all rental, that's the way it is nowadays. It's, homeownership has gone out the window.
That's, I hate to tell you, but that's not true. I do a lot of work for Massachusetts Housing Partnership with Southern Boards of Appeal. We're working with four other, four communities right now in all of them are for home. I can't talk today, homeownership projects.
All the 40Bs?
All the 40Bs that I'm working on right now with other towns.
And how long does the...
I'm not going to cite the names.
How long, how long does the, so it's sold as affordable house? And how long does that stay on the rules as an affordable house?
It's in perpetuity.
So if they built two 40Bs here, affordable housing, all of those particular units would be counted towards...
If they are rental units, all the units count. If it's homeownership, only the affordable units count.
Oh, isn't 40B about...
40B, under 40B, renters can reduce rental or homeownership units.
So is there, so if, I'm just trying to find out.
Sure, sure.
So if a 40B came to town and it wasn't a rental, is there a minimum requirement for affordable in there?
25%.
25%?
Yes.
Which is still better than what we're limited to, 10% on this?
10%, yes.
10%, okay. I'm just trying to figure out in my head how many 40Bs, because the state makes it impossible for us to meet our 10% requirement of affordable housing when they don't add anything to it. So for instance, with this one that we're looking at, it's a break even point. At best, it's break even with the 10%, as opposed to at least, if they're going 40B at 25%, at least it's, it's taking a chip away. But again, I don't, I don't want to expound on it because then that's gonna go into manufactured homes and how they're not counted towards our affordable housing stock.
Yes, that's another whole issue.
And that's 30% of the houses in car.
Yeah, I understand.
No, I appreciate you listening to me. I'm just, I have, sometimes I have to think out loud.
Donna, you have a question?
I just have one question and I wish someone could answer it. How did this MBTA 3A zoning come about? I know it's to do with housing, but why was it created?
Why we only did it that time?
No, actually, no, Governor Baker did it, believe it or not. He started it and she is taking it to the finish line, yeah.
It was based on Obama's brainchild.
It was tapped onto an economic development bond bill in early 2021.
And so with this in consideration and with the additional dwelling units that we've already approved, or most, every city and town, I think, of the state has approved, she's still saying we're gonna be over a half million units of housing.
Well, if she would...
12,000 apartments available for rent right now in the state of Massachusetts. 12,000.
Half the problem is, Donna, it's like she can't even control the state, so that's why she's trying to impose this on us, because if she'd stop these people coming into our estate that shouldn't be here, we wouldn't have to provide all this housing for them, so.
And the housing available, nobody can afford it.
I know, but I'm just saying, 12,000 apartments available for rent, and now they want to force something on cover that we're gonna be affordable in cover, I believe, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I don't know a lot, is $3,000 what the price for the rent is for affordable for cover because we're on the Boston rate?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
I think it's $3,000 that we're considered under the Boston rate. So how does that afford you for cover?
It's not.
So maybe we want to review, just to make sure we get the correct properties?
Sure, and Mr. Bott is looking for us to extend this so that he can come and get a recap.
He's on his way here.
He's on his way, so that's a great idea.
I'm ready to add.
I was just going to, yeah.
We've discussed everything we need to discuss, I just think we should recap.
You are the chair.
Yes, yeah. Can we just go through that list again?
So I have Spring Street extension area to look at.
Yeah.
32 West Street.
Okay.
Make sure it's 30-32.
It's a large parcel and we need to figure out how to sort of...
It's actually called 30-32.
30-32.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
And then 312 to 314 Tremont.
Yes.
That one should be in conjunction with the Meadowbrook.
I have that in parentheses.
Okay, all right.
Okay, very good.
And the Wenham.
89-A Wenham Road.
With 85.
Those three, we're trying to work together, those three, like a trifecta.
Yeah.
So that would...
So three with what?
As, to see...
A sub-district?
Yeah, as three sub-districts in the overall district.
So are you envisioning the possibility of a zoning map amendment with a 3A district that is comprised of three areas?
Yes.
Which might be 312 to 314 Tremont, Meadowbrook, might be something of Spring Street extension, might be 89-A Wenham Road, for example.
Yeah.
So we'll look at these.
Although, I'm thinking that Spring Street can almost sit by itself.
Well, probably can.
Yeah.
I think I know, I know the area you're talking about.
Okay.
We'll model it, we'll model it, we'll play with it a little bit and take a look at, have maybe some folks in the office, maybe we could do this on Thursday. Just show people what we're looking at and get some input from the other staff.
I really appreciate your patience tonight and all the help that you've given us.
Very good.
We're here to help you, and I know nobody's too happy about this. Our job isn't here to preach to you, we just want to help you comply.
Very good.
That's all we're here for.
Well, thank you, thank you.
No problem.
And if we don't have any other further questions for anyone, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Submoved.
We don't have the minutes, yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do you know when you're gonna meet next?
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Next week.
Okay. So we're gonna have to prefer to send Tom out.
Okay.
I can't be here, I'm on my way.
Very good.
We will make sure you have.
We might also be meeting the Tuesday after, is...
Is that the night that the war closes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, that's not the night. That's the deadline for advertising the hearing.
Oh, the public hearing, your public hearing?
Right.
That's the deadline?
Yeah. But that's the day the select board sends the zoning articles to the planning board, so I expect that there's a very good chance. But currently, we're scheduled for certain next Tuesday.
So we just had a motion, you seconded?
I seconded it. Herslake says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Please feel free to speak up, we would definitely rely on your input to make our decisions, so thank you again.
And at the next meeting, it will be a little bit easier to hear people. We'll be over at the meeting room, the town hall, so I apologize for this. Very good.
And we'll have Mr. Bott hopefully.
Thank you.